Now we're down to new business. And the only person I have is on the trust, setting up the trust authority. Just maybe next week you can tell us how long they think it'll take them to get it set up. Just some kind of timeframe.
You need to select the people that are going to be on the trust?
Well, we... I understand that, but we're going to have to put something in the agenda about that next week.
I understand that, but who do you want on the trust as of now? Clark, earlier I had a separate meeting with... And I guess we're doing this under new business?
Correct.
And I do have another question, why the jail committee wasn't on there?
Because we discontinued the jail committee last week. We're going to put set up trust authority, and then they're going to...
You discontinued that?
Yes. We discontinued the trust... I mean, the advisory board committee, we're going to put up trust authority. We're going to develop trust authority, and we'll be jailed on there.
Is that in, please?
Yeah.
Would you need to keep them in place until you do get the trust authority?
But it's in the... It's on camera. That's the reason I was asking how long it's going to take to get the trust authority and the law or paperwork set up.
Do you know what you need to mention?
They voted last week.
What was I at?
Sitting right there. He's like, well, he doesn't like it. But, I mean, I don't know, were we supposed to be even involved now, or what?
Well, that's the question I'm asking. Who's going to be on the new trust?
That's what we're working... I mean, like you said, it has to be one commission. One...
Let me read the statute.
Read the statute, of course.
Jail trust membership, and this is Oklahoma State Statute 6178K. Any trust created to administer or oversee the county jail facility shall consist of not less than five members, and must include a county commissioner, and the county sheriff, or their designated, and one member appointed by each county commissioner. The appointed members cannot be elected officials. That's what it says.
Randy, you pretty well know, because I'm probably 99% sure it's going to appoint.
Uh, no, I don't.
I think leaning heavily towards Stanley Glenn, I'm going to talk to him and see myself.
Well, I talked to Stanley, and he didn't say he would serve on it, but I asked him if he would help us with it, and he said he would. But we still have to know what commissioner. We know who the county sheriff is. We'd like to recommend that also the jail administrator be on there. Anybody's going to appoint him, say that?
Well, with that, I don't.
What's the girl, right? Katrina Christie?
What would you say, I don't know, to hear about Yale?
She's not going to be a member.
Well, she can't be a member.
She can't be a member, but she could also, she could sit there as an advisor as to the financial aspects of the county, as to what we can and can't do. I mean, she is the treasurer of the county.
Mm-hmm.
And she should be abreast of everything that any part of a system in the county that's spending this much money, she should be part of it.
I agree with that. But, uh, so we'll have sheriff, one commissioner, and then the jail administrator, that'd be three. And then each commissioner appoint one, and like on the boards there at Adco, you know, you have one from each district, then you have one at large, is what they call it. So that would make seven.
Have you all decided which commissioner you want on there?
No, I've...
We haven't all...
No, we haven't discussed it, talked about it much, but...
Okay, I guess the question comes now, is do you want the part of the jail committee on there?
Well, it should work if we each commissioner nominate one, then we have one at large. I'm assuming that's how they want to do it. We haven't given much, we haven't talked about it any yet, Randy.
Is there any reason to go with all five?
Yeah, because the time you have the jail administrator on there, and the sheriff, and the one commissioner, you know, that would lead forward. If you have odd numbers, you know where to vote. Most boards can have odd numbers because of voting process.
Has anyone spoke to the jail commissioner, has she been outside of her own?
I have.
I have a question. And I don't know that I'm understanding this right. Would the present jail committee not be on it, ma'am?
No, ma'am, that's a totally different... It's going to be a trust authority.
But I would think you would need those people that have worked from the very beginning, and done all the background work, that they would need to be on that committee.
I'm not arguing that.
Oh, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just asking...
I'm saying, you know, if we... If each commissioner appoints one from their district, or wherever they want to, with the three that would be on there, and those three, then you would do one at large. And that means that person can come from anywhere. That's how a lot of our boards at Adco are set up.
But the commissioners could appoint, each commissioner could appoint one of these...
Each commissioner could appoint one, and then they, and then would come from their district, so to speak, and then you could, if they wanted to, and then the fourth one, they'd call that large, and that would make seven members. Which I think seven members is a good idea, though it's a voluntary spot, and it may be a circumstance where somebody can't be there at a certain meeting, so...
Well, personally, I want to appoint somebody from my district. I think we need to have the whole county involved. Okay, I'm going to ask the question again. People that were sitting on the jail committee, are you going to want them on the trust authority? There's four of us.
Well, like I said, I, it sounded like Clark wants to nominate somebody from his district, so each commis...
You don't have to hold it at seven, you can have as many on there as you want.
So what do y'all think? Happy. I haven't given much thought, Randy, I didn't know we were going to make that decision, and I didn't.
Well, I mean, that's why I was putting off till this week, so we could come up with people to serve on it, and, uh... Here it is. We need to come up with some names. And we can't assemble it if we don't have the names. You've got to have members of it, and you're asking me how quick we can get it done. I'm trying to move as fast as possible. So I'm going to ask the question again, do you want the same people that were on the jail advisory committee on this trust, or not?
Why not?
Well, I'm going to... I'm going to say that we're going to put it on the agenda a little point in next week. And I mean, I'm just wanting to vote, Randy, I can't speak for... I'm not going to speak for the whole board.
The whole board's here, speak up.
And I just did. I told you next week we're going to have it on the agenda, and we're going to appoint the board members to the trust authority. Randy's told you the three that's going to be on there. And Clark thinks we ought to nominate one from each district, and then we're going to... I guess what we need to discuss today, Randy, in my opinion, is how many we're going to have on there. To me, that would be the, that would be the first step in my way of thinking.
Well, it seems such a wise...
And then we would...
Excuse me.
Go from there. How many, you and Clark, how many, Marvin, how many do y'all want on there? In your opinion, I mean...
Well, I wouldn't know, I'd rather just go with the five, like this statute. Say, uh...
Marvin?
You do, you might, you know, have one point, all the five.
Can I ask another question? Why would you not want the committee that's been working on this the whole time? Why would you not want them on that trust committee? I don't understand that, I mean, I'm just asking a question, I'm not...
I'm not saying they won't be on there.
Shouldn't be a no-brainer, they ought to be on there, because they've been doing all the work in the beginning, along with whoever you guys pick.
Yeah.
Once again, I'm not, I'm not saying they won't be on there. I'm just saying, I just asked the question, how many members do we want on there?
Have y'all individually approached somebody, or...
No, I haven't, I haven't given...
Clark, you have somebody in mind, maybe?
Yeah, I have somebody in mind, but I don't have it confirmed, so I'm not going to throw any names out.
Well, I do know some places have twelve, you have to have seven to have it approved when you do vote. If, if, say, five is gone, or four's gone, you have seven to clear it.
You said to have a four.
Yeah.
Yes, but if you have, if you have some that's not there, if you have twelve as a total, you, more than ninety-nine percent of the time, you're going to have seven there, if there's something you voted on.
But, go ahead.
Paul, I would think, as a citizen, I would think we would want at least one or two representatives of the jail advisory, present or the past jail advisory committee on the trust board.
I'm not, I'm not just keeping that arg... I mean, I...
Well, I just wanted to make the...
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, and I'm not, I'm not knocking that idea. Like I said, as of right now, we've got to come to a point of how many people's going to be on it, right? And then we'll take the next step, but...
It doesn't really matter, as long as it's five or more. That's the statute, so how many on there you want. The way I look at that is, is that all the help you can get is going to be a great asset. The more people that's working towards operating it, and helping it operate, and help find funding for it, and deal with the operations of it, the better off you're going to be. Because every one of them that'll be on there will be reaching out to other people or other means, looking for grants, bonds, anything that we can get that's going to contribute to make it a better facility and sustainable, and help the county pay for it, is going to be of an asset. Getting three, four, five people on there that won't do anything is not going to be a good deal.
No, whoever's on, you're right, whoever's on there is going to have to...
I mean, there'd be nothing wrong with having thirteen or seventeen people on it. Because every one of them is going to be contributing.
To have representation for each commissioner, you'd only need two more people in addition to you all. One from the Kyoto area, and one from your area, Paul. Why can't you just leave the committee as it is? You all appoint, uh, each one of you appoint one from your area, and have on there what you all have said, what's required, and let that be it, and you can settle that pretty quick.
Good suggestion.
Might be three, and then four, that'd be seven, and if we... I think if we done that, we need to put two more on there and make it nine. If we go that route, we're going to have everybody's mind, huh?
Well, you've got nine from what we've already discussed. You've got the commissioner, the sheriff, and the jail administrator, that's three.
Mm-hmm.
Three board members, and then three appointed, or three advisory members, and three appointed would be nine.
Yeah, but if we went that way, we still got to come up with three other names, don't we?
No, that would be your nine. Well, there's four, there's four on the... Oh, you had, you said that y'all wanted to pick one each from your district. That would be the three you're talking about.
Right.
Well, you already got three from one district.
You three are from District Two.
No, we got four.
Well, we have four. I don't know if Tom's going to serve. What I'm saying, we have three from District Two, and I have no problem with that. I, I'm not arguing any of that, I'm just saying I'd like to pick somebody from District Three to put on there, that's all I'm saying.
Well, Tom said last week, I guess it's last week, because I asked the question, why would you not want to serve on the trust authority? And he said, me would be personal reasons, he said, if you could be sued. So he said, I will not serve on the trust authority. So that was what he said.
That's all I'm saying, that's, I would like to get somebody from District Three to be on it. That's all, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, question's been out there. We've been talking about this committee authority for two weeks now, and, uh... I guess I could ask it a different way, do y'all want the committee to be on there? I don't know, I mean, I don't necessarily say I want the whole committee, but I don't have a problem with some of them.
You'd like to exclude some of them?
Well, I mean, I'm not just saying necessarily we're just transfer all four over on this thing.
I don't think Tom would have to go with, like, the transition anyway, I don't think.
Well...
Well, I want to make one statement. I have spent hundreds of hours helping y'all with this, and if y'all can't make the decision that you want us three to stay on here after we've spent all these hours and hours helping you, and you dismissed us last week, and we're still trying to help you, y'all can't even make the decision whether you want us to stay on there or not?
Amen.
I would...
I, you know, I'm going to walk out if that's the case, I don't need me spending no more of my time.
Well, if...
That's a simple decision to be made.
I'm going to ask again, you've never answered my question yet. Why would you not want the original committee on?
Ma'am, I answered your question, I...
No, you didn't.
I don't, I don't have any problem with them being on there.
But then why not go ahead and vote?
I think we're just trying to figure out how many members, and...
That's all we're trying to figure out, is how many...
Well, what about the suggestion, two more?
We can't vote on it today, it's not on agenda.
I mean, Marvin already has three on, on there, from his area.
I understand that.
And you need one, and Clark needs one.
If we put, my suggestion, if you let me, if we use these three, and then we have one commissioner, sheriff, that'd be, that'd be six.
Commissioner, sheriff, the administrator.
And if we done one from each district again, that'd be nine, that'd be an odd number.
Well, you wouldn't be doing one from each district, you'd already have three of them on there, if you accept the jail committee. These three are all from Marvin's district.
I understand that, ma'am, what I said, I said if we kept these three, and had the administrator, the commissioner, and the sheriff, and then we picked one more from each district, that would be nine. Three, three, and three's nine, that way the whole county would be represented, represented.
Why would you have, I guess, why would you have to pick another one from Marvin's district since you already have three?
We need, we need an odd number, in my opinion, because most time you have a chairman, and a chairman can vote, because I checked this out through CD, it'd be, the chairman can vote, but if you have a... But most time the chairman doesn't, well, anyway, I'm not going to go on that, but if there's an odd number, somebody doesn't show up, I mean, it's just good to have an odd number. And I'm, when I ain't arguing with him, saying three, three, and three is nine. That's all I'm saying.
I, I don't think you all realize, uh, and here goes me with my mouth again, but I don't think you realize how this makes, it makes it look like you all do not want them on here.
Ma'am?
Now, now, let me finish, let me finish.
Well, speak your mind, and that'd be enough.
Uh, the whole time I've been coming, I, I can tell that you all are not too much in favor with what they've been saying or doing. Now, as an outsider, I think they've been doing a great job. And I would think, with shape that the county is in right now, I would think you would be clutching at any straws you could find to get it back... You know, we don't need any, oh, the courthouse is going to close, the county's going to fall through. We knew, we're, we need, we're going to pull them out of it. We're going to come out on top. We're Haskell County, we're Stegler, Oklahoma, and we have a lot to be proud of. Now, it sounds to me, as a citizen, it sounds like you all, for some reason, do not want these men on that committee. Now, that's not say so.
Okay, I appreciate your comment, but it's not, that's not the answer. This has just dropped our attention today, and it, I, I, I'm not knocking these three guys. I hope, I don't know if you understand that, I'm just figuring out how many we're going to have on there. Randy, how many we're going to, how are we going to put the people on there if we don't have, know how many is going to be on there? That's all I'm saying. And we, are we going to have nine people? That's all I'm trying to get at. Ain't trying to knock, knock these people out. But I, I don't know how you're going to nominate somebody if you don't know how many you're nominating.
Oh, I'm really...
We're in the meeting. I understand that, but she's like, she's, anyway, I think...
I mean, y'all can make that decision today, y'all, I don't understand why you're not wanting to make... That's the reason we continue on not getting anything accomplished. You always want to pass it on to next time, next time.
Because it's...
You don't want to make decisions.
Because this is the first time Randy's told me that we had to have committee member names to go on with the trust authority.
Last, last week, Paul, y'all asked us, commissioners asked that the jail committee seek outside counsel to assemble public trust authority.
Correct.
And I said, we will have to have a list of everybody that's going to be on there at that time. And that's what I'm trying to do now. You asked me earlier today, how quick could we get this formed? I can't move forward if I don't have the names, the people that's going to serve on it. I have worked on it for my part a little bit, talked to a couple people, but I don't have a confirmed nominee yet.
Well, I think first thing we need to do is, we're going to have nine people on there, we need to decide that, because how, that's my opinion.
I don't, in the situation, in the financial situation that we're in, that would be irrelevant to me. You only have to have five as a minimum, and you can have as many as you want. And like I explained a little minute ago, you're going to need all the help that you can possibly muster up.
Do you think nine people's enough, in your opinion?
Nine or eleven, or, doesn't really matter to me. We don't have to fill everyone, we just need to start trying to get people on board to help it. There's some, some people that'll work hard at it, and offered, I mean, we've all given a lot of stress, and time, and money, and effort towards it, and, uh...
And we also need, how long will the term limit's going to be? I mean, that's something they're going to put in there.
That's, that's already all in there.
You started asking the question...
Are we in agreement, are we in agreement that the jail administrator needs to be on there? And we already know the sheriff's going to be on there, and we already know that, uh, one of the commissioners, have y'all decided which commissioner you want, or you want to discuss that, Samuel?
We'd have to discuss that a little more, but definitely one of us to be on there, so that'd be one of the nine, if we go to nine people.
Okay, I'm going to ask the question again, do y'all want Rock Humphreys, Rick Bumpers, or me and Randy Harrison on there?
I don't, I, well, I've already said, I think we need, we're going to have nine people, we need to decide that, and then we'll name them, but...
Did somebody say Tom said he didn't want to be on there?
I don't think, I, I can ask Tom, but I do not think he would, because Tom's not going to be on it. I don't think.
He flat said he wouldn't. That's what he said at that last meeting.
Yes, ma'am, he did, but I, I would like to confirm it with him, but he did say that.
I don't blame you, someone needs to...
So I... That's what I think, I think, I think we need nine people, but that's just my opinion.
Well, we could always put the nine, but we need to, we could add more, but that's what we're doing on there.
Because, I mean, it is a voluntary deal, and somebody might not, maybe at times two people can't be there. And if you done that with five, you just have three people sitting there.
And didn't you say the treasurer?
No.
Administrator, the jail administrator. And we'd ask the treasurer to just be there as a financial advisor. She, she could, she could not, because she's an elected official, serve as a board member.
Okay.
Well, I guess like this, Randy, we're going to have nine people. Marvin said he didn't care if y'all three being on there, but I, I would like a week to come up with another name, because I don't, I haven't talked to anybody in District Three yet about it. So, I mean...
Is there a consensus of the three of you that this three stay on there?
Marvin said he didn't care if they stayed on there.
But the other two hadn't said anything?
That's, if Marvin's happy with it, I'm happy with it, but I'm just saying, I, I'm not, I can't come up with a name out of District Three, that's all I'm saying, but there's going to be one from District Three on it.
But all they're asking you right now is to say whether or not you want to keep these three on.
I would just said that, I mean, I don't, do you want me to...
Let's simplify this, Clark, are you for me, Rick, or Rock being on there? I wouldn't vote against it, Randy, you're okay with it?
We're okay with it, Randy, but I, I'm just saying, I haven't found...
Just trying to get an answer, that's all.
I understand, but I...
And Paul, you're okay with it?
Yes, but I, as long as somebody from District Three's on there, and I just haven't had time to find him.
Okay, like I said earlier, I have talked to Stanley Glenn about it. He's got a world of knowledge of operations of jails, and sheriff's departments, and everything else. He said he would like to help us, but he did not say that he would serve.
I know where he lives, I would...
Well, I, like I said, I've talked to him, and I told him I'd be back in touch with him again, and...
I'll catch him, I, I say that, I'll, I'll try to catch him, bank catching at home.
Okay, so we're going to need, uh, two more people. Stanley, if Stanley will serve, that'll be, we'll need two more out of that, and then we're going to need to know what commissioner is going to serve.
We can, we can do that next week, we'll put it on the agenda. Because I, I don't know who's going to come from District Three, so we can figure that out in the commission next week. That's what I said, there's three there. You've got a commissioner, administrator, and the sheriff, that's six. And one more from each district. And I'm good with that, but I'm just, once again, I hadn't got my person from my district, but yeah, you get one, and Clark get one. But I, all I can tell you, Randy, is going to be nine people, but the other three, I'm not sure about. That's all, and I'll tell you.
But the jail committee will be on there, right? Since, since they all agreed?
Well, I haven't talked to Tom, when you're talking about the jail committee.
Well, I didn't really count him, because I told him he would.
Marvin, you're going to talk to Tom, won't you? We're going to talk to Tom. I don't want to talk, that's big up to him, if he's on it or not.
But he would be the fourth one, I was talking, these three. But he would be the fourth one, I was taught, these three.
I'm not gonna go through the three, 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 if that sounds...
Her, her question is, is, are the three of us gonna...
Yeah, we answered that, I mean, it's on tape, we, we've answered that. I know, but I thought we answered it. We can replay the tape, but the question is, is the other three from each district, that's the only three I told you we don't know about. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know how else to answer. Besides, we're just looking for one more from each district.
Okay, so, next week, we all will have the commissioner pick that's gonna serve on the committee for the trust.
Yeah, we can do that by next week.
We know the sheriff, whoever it is, is gonna be on there, we know that the jail administrator's gonna be on there. And then we know that Rock's gonna be on there, Rick's gonna be on there, and I'm gonna be on there, and possibly Stanley Glanz.
That's a possibility, maybe.
So, uh...
Excuse me, have they settled? Stanley's, is he gonna be around, or does he know, for sure that he could be around to serve on that committee?
That'd be his personal business, and I have no idea.
Okay.
I know he was there for managing a large facility for twenty-nine years.
Yeah, he's got a lot of experience.
He had to do something right.
And I think...
He sits on a lot of jail boards, or committees and such, so he's got a, a lot of expertise in the, in the matter, and we need that.
And something they, I think, we need possibly to find out by next week, is when he, when, when is the jail, trust authority going to meet? Are they gonna meet once a month, once a week, or, and where, after?
Well, I mean, we, you got everybody gathered and assembled at a commissioner meeting, it might as well be during, or after, or before. Just ties up one day that way.
I'm just wondering if the commissioner will have them to be...
Yeah, we can't, we can't be there unless there's a meeting.
I didn't say, before or after. Preferably before.
Well, I don't know that you said before.
With the excise board, yeah, they meet at eight-thirty. I guess, would you wanna have, so people, y'all would have during the day, at night?
Yeah, during the day, in the mornings.
I got no problem with that, but we, you know, that's fine, I just, without Monday morning, it's not gonna work.
And then you had somebody that had a job, that, that, but they all got jobs.
Well, I know, but sometimes you got, y'all are the boss, and, but sometimes you're not, you don't have that liberty to just take off and...
I know, hospital board, they used to make meetings.
Get them up to jail, get, get placed, make such a war, run that big one?
We hadn't got assembled yet, we could worry about where we're gonna have it, and what time we're gonna have it.
Well, I think, you know, when, when you ask somebody to be on this committee, that's the first thing they're gonna ask me.
Well, uh, work it out. Figure out when you wanna have it, and where, and what time, and all that. I just was asking who's on there, because these attorneys are gonna, they've already asked me who, and where, and what. And that's what I'm trying to get them to, to put it together like y'all asked me to.
Well, my, and my last question is, you know, we're gonna, I'm gonna do everything in my power to find somebody from District Three next week, but getting somebody to commit, I'm, I'm gonna do my best to get somebody to commit. But, um, I'd like to know, next week, we talk to attorneys, how long they think it'll be before it's ready? Just some, some kinda time, I mean, I ain't talking about a dead, dead-on date, you know, ten, twenty, thirty days period. I'm not talking about a week.
Paul, we're trying to discuss the next step.
I understand that.
To get attorneys to do their thing. I don't think it's gonna take them very long to put it together, but we do have to have the trust members assembled, and who's gonna serve on it. That's the next step.
We're gonna have that.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna wait, then it's, then you're the cause of...
I'm not gonna wait, I mean, I, I can't make somebody from District Three serve on, but I'm gonna do my best to find somebody.
And what if you can't find anybody on District Three? What are we gonna do then? We need to, need to have this assembled so we can move on with it.
Well, I mean, Clark still has to find somebody, we'll, we'll get them. We'll, we'll, we'll have, I'm confident I can have somebody.
By next Monday, or what?
By next Monday. Not saying they'll be up here in a meeting, but they'll be committed to be on the trust authority. I mean...
You think it needs to be someone that ain't currently serving on a financial advisory board?
I don't know, I, I don't know too many people that are serving on the financial advisory board, I mean...
Or just, that's my question, I mean, we kinda had our, our jail committee, or, uh, authority was the same, three people serving on, uh, two different boards, other than what state calls for, I don't, I mean, I'm saying like, if you're serving on the excise board, or any other financial advisory board for the county, do you not need somebody different on this, this trust?
Well, I wasn't gonna ask anybody that's currently serving or serving.
That's just a question.
Yeah, I, I didn't plan on asking anybody, and that, such as that, they can't be elected officials, so...
Right.
I want to have one more question. I noticed in the paper that December seventh, two thousand fifteen minutes were advertised last week in last week's paper.
We didn't just turn in the December seventh, two thousand fifteen, did we?
So you didn't want them published, or?
I said, we, we, you had to turn it in, we turned them in, I don't want them.
All right, we'll just...
Well, hold on a second, I'm not done yet. The minutes for the December two thousand fifteen commissioners meeting was running last week's paper. Was that recently brought from the clerk's office to be run?
I recently received it, but the decision was made by the publisher regarding that.
To run it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so y'all turned it in, and they ran it?
No, we did not turn it in, to my knowledge.
Recently?
No.
I mean, I've just had a million people call me and ask me what it was about.
Well, you know, there was, uh, it was, uh, a native of us, we're not, for a while it wasn't being run, like, there were several that was in, like, July.
I didn't know if it was a correction.
No, no, we don't have a correction, she put a four, I think it was, uh, money amounts, she, she made a mistake, and we're rerunning that, which we've never had to do before, but...
We had a typo on that, on one of them. She typed a four instead of a, you know, cash mark, with all the marks signed, which is just a tip, just a small error. But we corrected that.
I guess if you're gonna, it'd save a lot of confusion if you'd say this is a correction from December two thousand fifteen.
I did.
It wasn't in the paper.
A correction from June twenty-seventh, I did say that. I was talking about the June twenty-seventh meeting.
I was talking about the one that was running the paper last week.
Well, I don't know about that, I don't know.
Because it, it was confusing.
No, they ran behind for a little while on that, I don't know the dates, but, I mean, it wasn't... Because we get them, we type them, and we send them to the newspaper, she picks them up, and they just usually pick some type of...
I picked them up, but going forward, I will not be picking them up.
Okay, so the latest that you brought in, they will be picking them up?
Correct.
There's no other business, and I'm gonna make the most of it.
And this has nothing to do with, this has nothing to do with what we've been talking about. What about the air conditioner, where is that, that air conditioning system?
The plans to get a new one?
Uh, yeah, well, what, whatever, have they decided what to do, or, or what?
It's hard, yes, there is, a company's supposed to be giving us some specs to bid off of.
Okay, that's, that's all I want to know.
Here, just put that one there. Do you wanna second that motion, Adrian?
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion, more of a seconded, no, this is real stick.